All right, the meeting is called to order. Can we have the roll?
Danielle Bailey.
Here.
Greg Strike.
Here.
Andre Spinelli.
Here.
Jared Gardner.
Here.
Aaron O'Quinn.
Here.
Radhika Krishna.
Here.
Jim Winchester. Seth Anderson.
Here.
Brian Looney.
Here.
Jim Winchester. Jim Winchester, is that you?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, before we move into our agenda, I just want to see if there'd be a motion on the floor to move item D before item C, just because Commissioner Anderson did us all a favor by agreeing to come here today so that we would have enough people to hear the consent agenda. But I don't want to hold him here much longer than he needs to, since he's already been serving well past his term. So is there a motion to reorganize the agenda to move item D above item C?
So moved?
Moved, it looks like, by the chat, because I can't hear. I'm just going to assume it was Commissioner Gardner. He moved in the chat. Commissioner Winchester seconded it. Are there any opposed? Seeing none in the chat and hearing no online, the agenda has now been moved. Moving on to item B, minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by Commissioner Gardner. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner O'Quinn. Are there any objections? Seeing no objections in the chat and hearing no objections online, the minutes have been approved. Moving on to the, I guess we would do disclosures first. Is that correct? Yes. Disclosures. Commissioner Strike.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Spinelli.
Yeah, I was, on the consent agenda, I was absent from all cases, so I will not be voting.
Thank you. Commissioner Gardner.
No disclosures.
Commissioner O'Quinn.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Krishna.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Winchester? Oh, going back up.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Krishna, I see that, I believe you were recused from case 2021-0003 and 2021-0004. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
Okay. That is added to the disclosures. Commissioner Anderson.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Looney.
No disclosures.
And I, too, have no disclosures. Given the new criteria put forth, we need a motion on the table to allow Commissioner Spinelli to abstain from all cases and to allow Commissioner Krishna to abstain from case 2021-0003 and 2021-0004. I see it has been moved by Commissioner O'Quinn, seconded by Commissioner Gardner. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection in the chat and hearing no objection, that is approved. Moving on to a vote on the consent agenda. Commissioner Strike.
Yes.
Commissioner Spinelli has been recused, so he will not be voting. Commissioner Gardner.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Krishna, other than the two cases that you're recused from.
Yes.
Commissioner Winchester.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Looney.
Yes.
I also vote yes. The consent agenda has been approved. It was moved by Commissioner O'Quinn and seconded by Commissioner Gardner. With that, I believe that we can dismiss Commissioner Anderson. I would like to thank him for all of his time that he has put into playing his own, particularly for the fact that his term has been expired and he was very gracious many times over to make sure that we had enough people at our meetings. So, thank you, Commissioner Anderson. I believe I sung your praises another night, so I won't make you blush, because, you know, we can obviously see each other very well right now.
You did, I appreciate it. And thanks for adjusting the agenda for me. And, yeah, you guys all keep up the good work.
All right. I also just want to let you know that we have a few more thank yous and appreciations said in chat. But, yeah, I'll let you go, because time is of the essence, so no need to keep you longer. But just so you know, we all really appreciate all the work you did.
Great, thank you. You all, too. Bye.
Moving on to our next item of business, information item, case 2021-0020, contact-sensitive solutions. Do we have, is it a report from staff? Or is it just, are we just, all right, can we hear the report from staff?
Yes, you may, Chair Bailey. So this is an informational item. It's case 2021-0020. It's a contact-sensitive solutions, or CSS, transportation project site plan review, also known as a concept report. Just a reminder to the commissioners that since this is an informational item, you may ask questions and provide comment, but there's no, there's no motion that needs to be made and there won't be any public comment. So I'll just give a brief few sentences overview and then I'll turn it over to the applicant. But this is a project to rehabilitate Spinnard Road from Benson Boulevard to Minnesota Drive. It will improve safety, drainage, and bringing the roadway and non-motorized facilities up to current design standards. This project is the third phase of a larger effort to improve Spinnard Road. And Spinnard Road supports a high level of pedestrian and transit uses within the municipality. And this upgrade is supported by the 2020 Spinnard Corridor Plan and also the 2040 Metropolitan Transportation Plan. And I'll turn it over to the applicant just to give a little bit more information about this concept report.
Hi, this is Sean Baskey. Am I coming through all right?
Yes, you are. Thank you.
Perfect. And then is the screen sharing all right?
Yes, we can see your screen.
Okay, perfect. So Sean Baskey, S-E-A-N-B-A-S-K-I. First, I'd like to thank the commission for the opportunity for us to come in and talk to you guys about the project. So I am a Department of Transportation and Public Facilities Project Manager for the Spinnard Road, Minnesota to Benson Boulevard project. So this project has been in the works for a long time, nearly two decades, really starting back in about 2003 with a highway safety improvement program, project that explored a lot of ways to make the north end of Spinnard safer. And back in 2007, there was a preliminary engineering report done that recommended a three-lane road diet for the corridor. Construction was delayed and eventually the project was split into numerous phases because of public concerns and funding and a number of other things. So Phase 1 is that northern section, so from Hillcrest Drive to the base of the Minnesota on-ramp. And that construction was completed back in 2010. Phase 2 was the Benson to Hillcrest Drive portion, and that was constructed back in 2018, more recently. And then both of those projects were funded and managed by the municipality of Anchorage. So the difference between those ones and this one would be that this one is a federally funded project. So AMATs nominated and brought forth this project, and so it's a federally funded project. Because of that, the Department of Transportation will be managing the project, but we're doing it cooperatively with the municipality of Anchorage, because ultimately, the Spinnard Road corridor is owned and operated and maintained by the municipality of Anchorage. The safety improvements sought with this project will involve bringing the roadway up to current design standards and a number of other things. It'll include ADA compliance, pedestrian facilities, transit facilities, and repairs and improvements to the areas aging water infrastructure. That will, while we're doing all the rest of the work, we'll work on some of the water infrastructure. So this project involves Spinnard Road, and many of us know that. We drive it numerous times. And it's classified in the municipality of Anchorage's official streets and highways plan as a minor arterial roadway, with traffic volumes pre-COVID era, in 2018 or thereabouts, about 8,000 to 10,000 cars per day within the segment. From Minnesota to Benson, Spinnard Road has four 11-foot travel lanes, two in each direction, and an additional left-turn lane at the approach to Minnesota Drive. The speed limit is 35 miles an hour, and there's inconsistent bike and pedestrian facilities within the right-of-way that range between 60 and 80 feet. The entire team, late this fall, early winter, went out and walked all the facilities, got a taste for it. This project is really early in its infancy and its new efforts to go in and work on the facility. So the limited right-of-way allows little room for adjacent driveways, parking lots, and transit facilities, creating safety issues for all the modes of travel. So when we talk to people in public meetings and other things, people report that they feel uncomfortable walking so close to the moving traffic, you know, on those sidewalks. They've also commented that conditions are exacerbated in winter when snow is plowed into the limited space created by utility and the light poles, and that interrupt those pathways. And certainly, you know, I've gone out there and experienced that myself as well. Public involvement has been pretty extensive over the last near 20 years. But, so we're going on beyond some of those efforts. And early stakeholder outreach indicates that people are concerned about inadequate bicycle, pedestrian, and transit, and ADA-compliant infrastructure, and the potential for right-of-way impacts to property owners. We've heard a lot of comments over the years, and there's certainly a desire for coordination with other projects in the corridor. The municipality of Anchorage has got some. The Department of Transportation has some. There's a need to address high collision rates along the corridor, specifically with certain modes of travel. There's a desire to move utility infrastructure underground as part of the project. There's a need to address parking issues at adjacent businesses, just like with those previous phases of the project, especially where vehicles, you know, overhang the sidewalk and need to reverse into the traffic lanes, certainly in an undesirable situation. And then there's been requests from the design team to consider solutions that address homelessness, vagrancy, theft, and other things in the corridor. There's a desire for the rehabilitation project to support neighborhood revitalization efforts as well, and then, of course, to minimize construction impacts. So the project team intends to conduct a brief reevaluation of the three-lane and four-lane cross-section before moving forward with the design. It's a federally funded project, and so we've got to check off certain steps before we proceed forward. But expected benefits of road diets include an overall reduction in crash rates, reduced rear-end and left-turn crashes, and reduced right-angle crashes at side streets, while creating opportunities for the installation of pedestrian refuge islands, bicycle lanes, or transit stops. Certainly, you can see a number of those things in the northern sections of Spinnard Road and the previous phases. The four-lane alternative only provides for reconstruction of the existing configuration with potential undergrounding of utilities and other minor improvements. Preliminary stakeholder feedback suggests support for the three-lane alternative in the project corridor as developed in Phase 2 from the Benson to Hillcrest Drive. And then that's been pretty confirmed by overwhelming support heard at the open house last Thursday, January 28, and then also at the previous Spinnard Community Council events. So that's pretty much the end of our brief presentation. And we've got a number of our teammates here on the consultant side, as well as the rest of the team at the department, that can help answer questions if you guys have any. Spinnardroad.com is our website, which has got a lot of information out there. And then we've got an email address, spinnardroad@dowell.com, for people to email us, comments, and other things.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. Looking to the commissioners, do you have any questions for the petitioner? And just to double-check, because presenting over Zoom can be a little awkward, I wanted to make sure I did not cut the petitioner off. Was that correct? You were done with your presentation? I just noticed that you're still.
I sure am.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just bringing up the view of the overall corridor, just in case there's any questions about specific items that, you know, we can zoom in and talk about them.
And then as a follow-up question for staff, since this is just an informational item, is there any action needed by the commission tonight?
No, Chair Bailey, there is not.
All right. Commissioner Chris, oh, sorry. Commissioner Spinelli.
Yeah, I was just curious on the, if you could elaborate on the feedback regarding, between three-lane and four-lane option. I feel like I remember that being pretty contentious prior, and I was just wondering how people feel about it now.
Sure. So I think, through the chair, thank you so much for the question. We've had a couple people mention some brief comments about four-lane, a four-lane section, but pretty universally, the team has heard about the desire to look similar to the northern section, north of Northern Lights. And so we've certainly heard some concerns about, you know, facilities that they want in addition to a three-lane alternative, you know, and things to consider when we're, you know, how wide to go with facilities, bike lanes, sidewalks, and other things. But not really a push for a four-lane section through the area. Certainly, we're going to have to tie back down into the Minnesota intersection. So specifically, AMATs wrote out the consideration for doing any work at the Minnesota intersection with Spinnard Road. And so we'll be doing some very limited work there to bring things into compliance with ADA. So, and so doing, we'll have to tie back into a four-lane section on this side of it. But outside of that, pretty universally, we've heard three-lane section is what we want. And when can we have it?
Thank you. Commissioner Krishna.
Thank you. I have a few quick questions, I think. One is, you know, I saw that this was Phase 3, with the first two phases being completed. Are there anticipated to be further phases south of Minnesota?
I'll leave that to the municipality of Anchorage and what, you know, they're charged with in the future. As of right now, you know, the Department of Transportation is cooperating with the municipality on this phase. I do not know of any future improvements or projects on the book west of Minnesota, but that wouldn't be surprising, seeing as how, working for the Department of Transportation, I don't, I've got, I've got 100 other roads to pay attention to.
Okay, thank you. And then I saw, obviously, in the report that, you know, one difference between this and previous phases was that 1% for art wouldn't be included in this phase. Is that the only sort of tangible change due to the source of funding? Or are there other sort of signage or art aspects of the project that would maybe differ from how Phase 1 and Phase 2 were implemented?
Sure. So outside of the federal funding, 1% for art appears to be available now. And so it appears that we'll have that for this project. But it's an excellent, you know, it's an excellent question, because a federally funded project is surely not the same as the newly funded projects. And so how I'm describing it is, from back of sidewalk or back of pathway to back of pathway on either side of the roadway, you can probably expect to see a lot of the thing, same potential opportunities. But once you get behind that back of pathway, on the previous phases, there were public improvements on private property, you know, with landscaping, a lot of the things, all the way up to the doorstop of some of the businesses. And using federal funds, we can't do that. So that'd be the major difference along the corridor. And then similarly, you know, there were some unique things done with parking in the previous phase, north of Northern Lights. And some of those may be tools that we can work with, but most of them are not, because of the federally funded nature of the project. We will certainly have to address parking, but usually, on a federally funded project, they're taken into account individually by property owner, not a more holistic approach, just because of the nature of the regulations and laws that we have to comply with.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
And I would just point out that our work doesn't preclude other projects and other initiatives and other things from obtaining some of the same feel and look and character. But, you know, there's limitations associated with federal funding, and so some of those other things might have to be tapped into by the community, local government, you know, and others.
Commissioner Looney.
Yes, thank you. Yes, thanks for the presentation there, Sean. Actually, I think you mentioned it a little bit ago. It's like, when can we get it? And that's what I'm looking for. You know, we've lived and worked in this area for 30-plus years, and it's, like everyone knows, there's plenty of time to do it. And you answered a bunch of my questions I was going to ask about the creative parking solutions and the landscaping that, you know, we saw in the previous phase. So it sounds like that's probably not going to be in the works or won't be near as easy to implement with this new funding constraint.
Correct.
Is there, is there, I know you're just on a conceptual level now, but there's been studies that talk about one-way traffic, you know, down there at 36th Avenue and the very, the link that connects up between Spinnard and Minnesota. Is that still in the works? Or do you even know what direction to go in with that yet?
Through the chair. So I'll answer the timing question first. And so as far as construction goes, the soonest that you'll see us out there is likely 2025, minimum. Federally funded projects are subject to a lot of slippage, and this would be no different. And so the first phase that we're in right now is really just getting the environmental document approved. So we're developing the alternatives. We're working through the CSS process and engaging with the public, you know, at a lot. And then, so that kind of answers the timing side of it, unless there's any questions on that additionally. Then I'll just move on to the 36th Avenue and Minnesota intersection discussion. And so specifically, AMATs wrote out working on the Minnesota intersection, which kind of involves 36th Avenue and that whole one-way design. You know, some would call it a couplet. But I would say that there's a future project that would potentially look at doing anything there. This project doesn't preclude any work along that corridor from being whatever it may be. It may be a couplet at some point in time in the future. It may be something else. There's, you know, there's a lot of different alternatives on the table. It's a unique problem to resolve, and, you know, there's certainly a lot of stakeholders and a lot of needs in the area to do different work. And so I'll just say that working on 36th Avenue in Minnesota is out of the project, really.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Seeing no other questions in the queue, I'd like to thank the petitioner for their time. And seeing as how there's no other action needed on this item, is there a motion to adjourn? Wait, oh, sorry. We had an appearance request that I, I guess I missed in the.
Yeah, thanks.
Oh. Sorry, Mr. Johnson. I don't know how I missed that.
Oh, you got me. You caught me.
All right. Moving on to item H1, we have an appearance request from Scott Johnson.
Hey, thank you for allowing me to provide my testimony. My name is Scott Johnson, and I pay taxes on 3340 Tarwater Avenue. Scientific studies demonstrate that looking at the light source of LED light causes temporary blindness and retinal damage. I'd like to see a regulation that protects the human eye from being directly exposed to the light source of LED light. In the 1970s, Alaskans passed legislation to outlaw billboards, simply on the premise that billboards are ugly. I'm glad I can drive up and down the highways in Alaska without having my natural beauty of the environment disrupted by ugly advertisements. LED's high specular intensity light source is not only ugly, like a billboard, but unhealthy and painful to the eye. Now, I get that people want to protect their homes and businesses, but we need to make sure that lights aren't being used as an offensive weapon. Unless I'm actively trespassing, nobody has the right to shine blinding light source into my eye, punishing me for simply looking in the direction of their property. I saw a homeowner screw a light bar to the front of his home at the end of the street, blinding drivers going down the street. On Sunday, I walked down to the boat launch to enjoy the sunset, and someone had put up giant LED lights, totally disrupting the view and blinding anybody who looked in that particular direction. I've got, you know, a long list, but I'm not going to give it here. I just want to kind of move on to what I think would be a good solution. The engineer who designed the bike path on the bridge between Muldoon and Tocotnew Commons over the Glen Highway figured out how to properly shield the light source of LED light from the public. So it can be done, and it can be done cheaply. Instead of facing the blinding light source out toward the public, the light source faces the inside of an opaque metal bowl, and the inside of the metal bowl is painted white. So the light is reflected onto the bike path by light reflecting off the inside of the bowl. The blinding light source is completely hidden, and the result is fantastic. We use regulation to protect our ears from annoying noise pollution created by jackhammers, loud music, and barking dogs. So I propose we pass regulations to protect our eyes from light pollution created by unshielded, high specular intensity light sources. I get that LED is here to stay, because LED light saves the city at least $1 million a year. But the human eye should not be exposed to the light source of high specular intensity lights. So it just seems to me that no light in our city should have any higher lumens or greater specular intensity than the new LED streetlights that we've currently installed, because those lights are definitely bright enough. LED lights need to be properly shielded so that the human eye is not directly exposed to the light source, and I recommended a light source covering with opaque reflective bowl. And then finally, if an LED light is not going to be properly shielded, because that light is an offensive security light rather than ambient lighting, then the light needs to be set to off unless triggered by a motion detector that only turns on once trespass is actually committed. Like most Alaskans, I enjoy the beauty of my natural surroundings. Like most Alaskans, I enjoy the beauty of my natural surroundings, so thank you for listening to my testimony about light pollution and my recommendation to pass regulations to protect the eye from ugly and unhealthy high specular intensity light sources. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Just as a follow-up question, you said it at the beginning of your presentation, but I was wondering if you could tell me about your background again?
Well, I, I live here in Anchorage, you know, and, I mean, if you want to know what my job is, I, I teach geometry over at Barlet High School, and I also teach some adjunct courses over at the University of Alaska in philosophy. I moved to Alaska in 99, and, let's see, how long have I lived in Anchorage? Well, I've owned my particular property for 10 years, and then I rented, you know, for three years before that. So, and then I was in Anchorage for a year before that.
Thank you. Turning to the commission, I was going to see if there's any questions for our public I see no questions in the queue. I think I'll follow up with one question.
Okay.
Mr. Johnson, you provided a lot of oral testimony tonight, and I know as a commission, we're used to seeing written reports that are easier to look at. Would it be possible?
Absolutely.
To provide a written summary, just so we can look at the, actually, you talked some about the LED high-intensity lights and how many lumens that is, having more.
Yeah, I'd be happy to create a written report with pictures, whatever you like. I'd be happy to do that. I would consider myself lucky.
Yeah, having something with more specific details, I think, would be helpful if it was something that the commission or possibly planning staff was going to consider in the future.
Okay.
All right.
I can provide that for you or the whole board. Just let me know, I guess, after the meeting, how you want me to disseminate that information.
Just that you could provide it to staff, and staff would be able to disseminate.
Staff is the?
Yeah, the planning staff.
Okay, and that would be by email?
Yes.
Through the chair, Scott, I believe you spoke with Francis McLaughlin. You could go through him.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
All right, I see no further questions in the queue. I would like to thank Mr. Johnson for your time.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Winchester, did you have a comment?
It's on a separate matter, so we can move on, but I sat on the AMAT Citizens Advisory Committee, or Community Advisory Committee, for Commissioner Looney, and I just wanted to let everybody know that the non-motorized plan is out in draft form, and that public comments are open until March 5th. And that's all I had on that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Winchester. I would just like to remind staff that there is no meeting next week, so you have the rest of the month off. Seeing if there's a, there's a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Winchester, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Looney. Going once, going twice, going three times, there's no objection. We are adjourned. Thank you.[1675.91]